This meeting, which is hereby called Water, is in compliance with those requirements of the law. The notice to post the office of the Board of Education and communicated to the municipal clerk, Daniel Carter, and Star Ledger on October 30th of 2018. Please join me in this last meeting. Now I'll take roll call. Ms. Crisales?
Present.
Ms. Miller?
Present.
Ms. Mullin?
Here.
Ms. Nutting?
Here.
Mrs. Bellis?
Here.
Ms. Riley? Ms. Ross? Dr. Stager?
Present.
Ms. Bleszus?
Here.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our mission revision planning meeting today. I'm happy to see you all. We really do want your input and we'd like to hear your suggestions. Board of Education is trying its best to reach out to the community and make sure that the community is involved in all of our endeavors. So I have to say to those of you who came out early on Saturday morning, and I know you're up early in the day for me, we really appreciate your attendance and I hope that you find today to be exciting and informative. So thank you very, very much for coming.
Good morning. I'd like to introduce myself to those who I haven't met, I'm Joe Block, Superintendent of Schools.
Good morning, I'm Christina Dallow, Assistant Superintendent of Schools, and I would like to say all of you with a coffee, because I'll need it this morning, so I'm glad I'm not alone.
So we're very excited to kick off the presentation, which is a very short description of some of the work that we're involved in this year in the Dover School District. So we have a district that's made up of professional staff, 24 administrators, 239 certified teachers, 21 additional certified professionals, and 139 support staff, and that's custodians, secretaries, bus drivers, all sorts of folks who make the educational experience what it needs to be for our students here. And we're thankful for their efforts, each and every day of the school year and in between those days, when they're preparing and reflecting upon how they can make instruction and the learning environment better for our students. Our student enrollment this year at Academy Street is a little bit over 500, 507, and East Dover, 432. This year, we are over 1,000, and Dover High School, 1,014, Middle School, 545, Wook over, 644. And this year, our first year of full day pre-k, we'll talk a little bit about that. Second, 127 students, for a grand total of 3,269 students in the district. When we're talking about enrollment, it's important to note that unlike many school districts in New Jersey, we are seeing rising enrollment and a significant rise in enrollment from last year. At the high school alone, this year, we've increased over 50 students from Weirman last year. So that does present both opportunity and challenge, but it also shows that Dover is a school district where students want to arrive in.
So as you may know, frequently in the summer and September, school boards will come together and develop goals for the district to meet the work that we're doing for that school year. We're going to look at three slides that will outline our goals. All of our goals obviously impact students and their families directly. This slide in particular speaks directly to that work that our staff and administration will do with the students. So we're looking to expand special educational services, we're looking at our high literacy program, we received some preschool expansion funds this year in September, and we're also looking at the high school level to see if we can begin the process for CTE coursework, which would partner us with a neighboring college or university or community college. The next set of goals focuses on our communication with our parents and stakeholders. So in terms of communicating out district initiatives, that would be happening at the superintendent forums. We have special education parents that need to organize and form a special education parent advisory group. And then we're designing a new website, which will be released November 15. Yeah, that's a lot of work, we just worked on that initially with the admin team. And the last goal, of course, for any school district would be to begin to establish and maintain relationships in the community with which we serve. Last set of goals are more looking at our infrastructure in terms of facilities and also the technology. So you can see we have looking at a long-term facilities plan, looking at initiating an authentic one-to-one for students to bring devices home and what that might look like, and also increasing space within our district schools. If you remember, the first set of goals talked about expanding special education, talked about high legal education. In order for that to happen, we need space within the schools to hold those programs and classes. So it all kind of intertwines together.
So some of our major activities, which we referenced just quickly as we go through the goals, activities that have occurred so far this year, the first one, and one that we continue to be very excited about is full day preschool. So this year, the school district received nearly $1.2 million in new funding from the state of New Jersey to support full day preschool. We have nine classes and 120 slots for students for full day preschool. And although we are very excited about that, we are even more excited at what that may open for us next year, as we have more partner, more partners who have come on board, as we talked just a minute ago, spaces at the beginning in the district. So we rely on community partners to help us provide three- and four-year-old preschool to our students. Next year, we have, we anticipate an increase of nearly 15 classes over the nine that we have this year, which should help us to approach our universe of students who require personal education. We certainly know that our community looks forward to that opportunity. We're very, very excited to say that our latest commitment is from the Mineville School District, which we partnered with already from the seventh and 12th grade level. So we're extremely excited that the preschool will be an increased area where we can work together. In terms of the special education, we also have opened a new program this year, a full day preschool disabled program. And that program is the beginning of what we hope to be an array of specialized programs to accommodate our students here in the district.
The next major activity happening in the district was the purchase of the Belmont Avenue House to expand our physical space. So as I mentioned in the third goal slide, in order to start to expand special education and the high legal education program, we need space in our school buildings, which is right now not available as much as we would need it to be. So to move our office and office outside of the district, it opens up a lot of space here at the high school to start that process. The bylaw literacy initiative actually kicked off this past week. We had the consultant Dr. Rebecca Field spend the day with Mrs. Trappah and Dr. Bachman and myself. She met with students and staff and administration to get an understanding of the bylaw literacy that's going on in the district right now. She will write a report and get back to the Board of Education and all the stakeholders about how we can expand those services and truly be respectful to the needs of the community and the students and what they are looking for.
So one of the areas that we have committed to in our goals is the increase of partnership with those in the community who would like to join with us in supporting our students and in the efforts of the school district. And so we just wanted to speak about a few of our partners who have really become very actively involved. The Community College of Morris has been an active group with us. We've met with the administration and with various executive department and the president of the college several times. And our hope is that, as Christina mentioned just a minute ago, that this will be a cornerstone for our CTE program. And more, more toward above that, that they will provide us with the resources that we can provide to more students at the guidance level, at the college level, and really having a path, not always specific to CCM, but to higher education in general, but they are valuable partners with great experience and great enthusiasm for working with us. We've also been involved with the Morris County Votech School actively. Both Christina and I have joined steering committees with them and are part of a network of districts now that are working actively for Morris County Votech. They are providing us with technical assistance for the CTE programs, which we've mentioned a couple of times. And they're also a partner in our preschool. So one of our, one of our great preschool classes can be found at Morris County Votech. It's a big, great visitor, anyone who would like to see that. It's, I think, perhaps a lot appropriate and interesting, because it's not only appropriate for our students, but high school students who are learning to be future educators. So they get high school credit as they work in conjunction with our teacher and our students, and we're very, very excited about that. They were very eager to join us, and we're thankful to them. We were also now a part of the North Dover, which is just a great organization of all kinds of folks who come together in the community to provide health and wellness, to provide support to our families, to really make Dover a great place, a continued great place to live. And we are excited to have you welcomed into that group and participating with them. And then Essex County and Services Commission wants a migrant program. We have a, we have a population of students and families here qualified for this program, and so we are anticipating no later than January, we're going to need two programs that are completely funded through the commission. One will be to our students for after-school tutoring, and another will be to our adult population who would like to take ESL classes or a TBT program. So we're excited about that opportunity.
So on the right-hand column, our other partnerships, Rotary, as you may know, is an active community group in Dover, and we are partnered with them. I am a member, Dr. Bachman's a member, our high school principal, Mr. Branks is also a member. And out of that partnership, we were able to bring Rotary into the high school and into the elementary school. So Interact is the high school club that is a partner club with Rotary. They've started their work already, and they've had at least one meeting, I know, where the Rotary members came in, talked to the students about Rotary and what it means to be a Rotarian, and they're off to a great start. Early Interact Club is for the younger kids to build those leadership skills within their classrooms and start to participate in some service learning. Enable is a program that our supervisor, Special Services, brought to us. Enable is a community-based group that will work with students of a certain disability category to get them job-ready. So that work will begin in April, May, when the students are going to be ready to take on jobs. They will come in, work with good, get them their skills up to par to be able to maintain a job in their own. FDU, Harley Dickinson, and the Teachers' College of New Jersey are two new partnerships as well. The FDU partnership focuses on Morgan Gillingham. Morgan Gillingham is a special reading program that teachers need to be trained. It's a two-year program to do that training. It's specifically designed for students who are learning disabled with a really an inability to read. So that program is fairly intense, but we've had a huge turnout for the meeting of the teachers, and we're very excited that we might be able to hold two classes for the teachers to get that certification. The TCNJ partnership focuses on the bylaw certification, so similar to FDU, TCNJ will come on campus and offer classes for teachers. That turnout was also very big. And there's other grand opportunities through TCNJ's academic department as well.
So this year, we've established a theme in conjunction with our school community that we kind of love Dover, and we've really been just so impressed and enthused at how our school community has put into this concept. And not only our school community, but our greater community. We really see it today as fitting into the theme of what Dover, because we are a whole community. Our partners that we've mentioned here, our partner district, the Mineville, our old groups that we mentioned, and every person in our community who sees school and learning as an important part of their living experience and their commitment to live here in this great community. So we're excited today to extend the one Dover theme to a greater audience and looking forward to the dialogue that we're starting.
I just want to say thank you for coming out. I know it's a Saturday morning, it's early, so I appreciate your time and effort in this initiative.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Charlotte Peterson, and I'm here for New Jersey School Courts along with my colleague Natalie, who will check you in. So we are really pleased to be here as well, to kind of help take you through this process. And that's why it's important, the words to say, "take you through this process," because that's really what this is all about, is getting an understanding of what's important to you. And we just heard the theme, "One Dover." We need to know what does that one look like for you, to make sure that we are all on that same page, that we're moving forward in a direction that aligns with what's important to the community. You know, we saw today what some of the goals are that the school district is working on for this year, but in order for us to be successful, we need to think longer than just this one year. We need to be five years from now. How are we going to start to work to move this forward?
If we go further, I'm so sorry, because I meant to mention this at the beginning of our presentation. If anyone requires translation services, we have them here to the front, to the right. You see the hands raised? So if you'd like to say, sorry.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we're going to kind of move forward here, kind of help explain to you in a hopeful word case that how we would like to hear from you today. The board had begun to, or September, we're making, and we kind of kicked off, we're going to talk about this idea of mission statement, a mission statement, and really, you know, command the board of the district to move forward on it and say, "okay, let's do this work. Let's bring everyone in, because this work is so important to the decisions that we have to make. You know, we are all facing, you know, decline funding at the same time. You're getting more students, and then having a need to do more work that you have to do. So we have to make sure we get it right. We have to get it right in a way that's important to you. So we're going to take you through this journey of what your work is going to look like today. So we recognize that we're starting out here in the auditorium, and then when we're done, we'll tell you how we're going to move then over to the cafeteria to allow you some time to sit in these small groups and talk so that we can do this work. So mentioned a little bit about mission and mission statements and why they're important, but the kind of easy way to kind of frame it is to say, "think of your school district as a car. Give me any car you want, but think of it as a car." And say, "okay, our mission statement is our engine. It provides the work that we need to focus on." And there's so many different educational initiatives out there, there's so many different things. How do we decide what are the right things for Dover? Part of the way we do that is by asking ourselves, "is this aligned with our mission statement? Is this even the foundation of how we want to move forward?" And then separate from that, we also need to know where we need to go. We need to know where we want to go five years from now. And so that's kind of what the vision statement is. That's that future direction. And when we, you know, we want to continue to innovate and do more things, better things for our students, that there needs to be some direction for that innovation. So that direction then is our vision statement. So basically, what we're doing today is we're giving ideas to the car. We're going to ask you to help drive that car for us. How, you know, how can you tell us where we can set the GPS on? How is it going to help direct where we're going to go? So that's what's important information that we need from you today. So as we continue, I want to make sure that you have a clear understanding of the mission statement, have a clear understanding of the mission statement. And what we're going to do today is basically get the data, get some feedback, get some thoughts, and then we're going to have a second meeting in early December, and that's where we'll actually formally have a statement, so today's information campaign. So let's start out with the very basic definitions of a mission statement and a mission statement and what the components are. So mission statement asks the question, "why? Why do we exist? What's our purpose? Why is there a Dover school district versus none? It's going to go somewhere else, "why? What's the function of this district? Why are we here?" And it kind of looks at the present, it helps give us that foundation. But then did it mean to what? What's that going to tell the future? When people succeed, what does that look like for our students? So again, we're looking at that future. So we're going to take a lot of time, so now we'll start in a little more detail, looking at mission statement. So again, like I said, it gives us that overall purpose of our district. So as we look at mission statement, we try and break it down into three parts. What do we do? Who do we do it for? And why? What's benefit, what's the impact of what we do to who we do it for? And there's parts guiding principles as we put this statement together, recognizing what it is, recognizing what it needs to drive our work. It needs to be something simple, you know. A lot of, sometimes if we see examples, they've got walk-in to the educational garden, and it really needs to be simple to motivate and direct our work. It needs to be inspiring to be unique to our school district, even though all the school districts in the state, we can say that we all are basically here for the same purpose, to educate our students. How do you do it and why you do it is different than anyone else, and we need to make sure that it's meaningful. And it needs to be realistic. So perhaps when we put this, and that type of, we come back, we'll have this check card that says, "we're putting these statements together," and make sure that we do fit all the ways we need to use them. So I wanted to show you some examples of mission statements that are out there. We have some from corporate to kind of show you the thought that we look at the bullets to organize the world's information and make it universally accessible and useful. So, you know, who they serve as the board, what they're doing is organizing the world's information, and what's the benefit? It's maybe made universally accessible and useful. So kind of looking at what we do, who we do it for, and what benefit do they buy? And then the same, we have some from different school districts, like you can look at dentals in the middle, it's, you know, simple, to educate and empower, so that's what they do. Who do they do it for? All students, and what benefit do they get to accept? So just kind of wanted to show you what these different examples are, and took the whole world, wrote down that same way, what we do, provide superior education for who, for all students, and why, so that it will lead us successfully and responsibly into the future. So again, we can see how they're different, they need to kind of explain to us what's unique to them, what's important to them. So this is going to be your work when we get into the small groups, and you have this on your agenda as a worksheet for you to break it down. And then that I also put, you have those sticky sheets up there on the wall for you to work on. So we're going to ask you as part of what we do to talk in your group, you really put you in small groups and have you talk in your groups, and come up with what you think the top five words are that describe the district, the top five things that build every district does the best, that makes you unique, for whom. So we want you to help identify who we serve, and then describe who we serve, and then again the why. What happens Dover students in a park? A lot of all the students. Some of the activities in the Dover baseball. It's different. What you need, advantages and differences in playing there. And then what you do, what are they doing? So that's going to be your work in your small groups, to kind of help that us gather data to be able to come back next time and put a mission statement together. So before I leave mission statement, I want to make sure that I don't ask any questions or anything that you're not clear about, about what the mission statement is and the purpose of it and what it looks like. Okay? Now we're going to move on to the mission statement, and then future cases of it. So if you look at your desired future, you know, if we look up at everyone's achievement, the students are achieving, the staff's achieving, the community is an integral part of the work that we do, what does that success include? We said it identifies your district's true work, it's your path that pulls you forward. So as we're doing innovation, as we're making decisions, it should all be leading us in that, to toward that desired future. So we can see if we, you know, look at where we are now, and, you know, think about where we need to be five years from now, you can see what that can help guide the work of the district, is saying, "where are those gaps? What do we need to do to get from where we are now to what that desired future looks like?" So we now have given the administration some direction as to, you know, identifying where those gaps might be. So again, as we look at mission statements, we said now we're looking at future. So if we look at some of the characteristics of the mission statements, that they need to be simple. So if you look at Disney, it's to make people happy. Aspirational, we can see Microsoft, they want people to realize their potential. IKEA, they also want to visualize, so you can think about if you went to IKEA, how I could help create a better everyday life for many people. And Southwest Airlines, we said we need to be future-centered, and they said, "okay, we know where we are now, but we want to become," so that's kind of the future language, "we want to become the world's most loved, most loved and most profitable airline." And he has their way of going, but that is, that is their vision. So you can see them, how that would help drive decisions, that would help drive the work that you're doing, the improvements that you need to make in order to achieve this desired future. So here are some examples, I can just review to look back, of what some different school district mission statements are. Again, if you can take that same concept and then apply it to a school district as well. And so both ways, like, you know, to prepare our entire receiving, you know, to engage the entire community, to prepare all our students, so that you're just going to try to see, you know, what is that, that future outcome of your life? And we're going to play a short video. You know, we are now kind of indicating our students to have a function in a world that's different than a world that we have to be prepared. So we can kind of consider that future, consider what skills our students need in order to be successful for that future. So I wanted to kind of give you, show you a short video, but kind of give you some thoughts about that. So, I wanted to kind of give you, show you a short video to kind of give you some thoughts about that. So, again, we just wanted to give you some things to think about when you go in your groups and then recognizing that we need to prepare students differently for that to be successful in this environment, to kind of see what they need. So, this brings us then to what we're going to ask you to think about when you get into your small groups about the visioning piece. And I want you to kind of start, one of the things you can find is an easy way to start a visioning conversation is to actually draw a picture. Because visioning is hard. We started with nothing, you know, asking ourselves to think into the future, think about what we want. And so, we don't really become great to start with. So, we're going to ask you to draw a picture of what the district looks like now. And then draw a picture of your desired future. And then list up the five phrases to describe the desired future. So, again, that's on your agenda. But just to give you kind of an idea of what we've seen in the past. You know, New Jersey School Courts just had a convention last week. We did two sections of strategic planning and we had the participants go through this. So, like I understand some people draw like a tack old sneaker and then like put some, you know, a fancy one or some of the ones who drew like a cactus that kind of have all these petals coming off of it. And then drew one that was blooming beautiful flowers. And so, just kind of like just think about, you know, talk in your groups about kind of what that desired future looks like versus where you are now. Figure out how to put it into a picture. And then how then to, you know, put it into words then so that we can use the words part of it to kind of help and like identify the mistake we have to look like when we come back the next time. So, if anyone have any questions about that, about the vision for that part of it? Okay, I just got to roll this slide up here. We're just to remind you that our next date is December 7th. So, we're going to come back again on Saturday. On this time, we're going to come back in the afternoon. So, we'll be here from 12 o'clock noon until 3 o'clock. Like I said, well, today we're collecting the data, getting the information from you. And then that will drive the work that we'll do the next time. So, what we're going to ask of you is, we're going to, like, so we're going to move from here to the cafeteria. And I was counting, there's probably enough people to go into three groups, probably. Groups maybe usually have about 10 people, so we probably have enough people for three groups. But what's really important is to split ourselves up into like different stakeholder representatives. So, for the board members that are here, you know, make sure there's only a couple of people. Make sure you split yourselves equally between the three groups. Or any administrators, any staff members, any community members. When we have the best, you know, when we have the mixed stakeholders in the groups, that's what makes for the best conversation. You know, how often do we have the opportunity to sit together in these groups and have this kind of a conversation? And that's usually the best part of this process. So, and I already have the yellow sheets up there set up in the cafeteria. We came from Florida, I think we can do three. So, we're going to have, you know, so please get, there's wonderful refreshments set up in there. So, please, you know, help yourself to your, I just want to give you one last instruction before you leave. So, when we get into the groups, we're going to brainstorm. We're going to write our final outcomes of our brainstorming work on the yellow sheets. So, you'll need to have someone in your group that's going to be your recorder. Groups, we actually have some that are good artists for the pictures. And also some people like have an experience to pick their art, right? So, it doesn't really matter, we just need to help convey your ideas. And then we're going to report our, our work. So, also need to appoint some lucky person in your group to be the one that, that will be the spokesperson for your work and to help the rest of us, you know, understand what you're thinking. So, as you go in your groups and you have these conversations, you know, actually, if you take into consideration the information that you heard from your administration today, then that was, we wanted to give you a basic foundation, a basic kind of understanding of where things are now. So, that can, you know, help inform your discussions. And think about some of the things that you saw here in this panel. And then have your own discussions about making it specific to Dover and also your work in Dover. Because that's what we need that to help the projects forward. So, we're probably, you know, we're pretty good here on time. I think we set ourselves three hours on deadline. It's not going to take that much time. So, again, I will be in the group with you. We'll be walking around, giving you an answer to any questions you have, providing whatever help and trying to keep the group kind of moving, keep us together and keep us intact. But at the end of the day, I want to make sure that we have great conversations and get some great feedback from you. So, again, I appreciate that everyone's paying us to have.